Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Sorry that we're here a little bit late getting started. The school board was in a closed session with some of our staff members. So let's go ahead and get started. We also have our planning commissioners with us. Unfortunately, this room is small, so I feel not great that we don't have everybody at the same table, but we'll make sure that there's participation by the school board members. So if you guys want to scoot up and training. All right. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Wyatt, if you want to lead us off. To just lead things off a little bit, the goal of the meeting is to talk about some of the trend data that we're seeing, where we're seeing some of the school projections, and the schools are definitely going to be talking about that. But it's still big picture items. We're not going to be diving into the weeds on the school board or the city council's budget at this point. That will happen at a future work session. And as we talked about at the last council meeting, council members are encouraged to get their questions down in writing, and then we can talk about how to, who's going to handle those questions to get them over to the school board and vice versa. So Susan, anything you wanted to add before we go ahead and get started?
No.
They don't have a one. Okay, I think that's.
We would be very happy if this meeting was streamlined. To the point, we've had six weeks of lots and lots and lots of budget meetings. We're all kind of meeting now, but we're here tonight to hear this information. I understand for you, we're not here to really talk about our budget proposal. We have other things.
Yep. And again, there is going to be a date that's being worked out to set that joint work session up, to dive into the school board's budget.
I don't think we're prepared to present anything. I don't think we were going to present anything. I thought this was just a financial update.
Yeah, that's fine. Right.
Thank you. As the mayor said, we do try to, we've traditionally gotten together on this Thursday after budget presentation to provide a little bit of a bigger picture, some multi-year forecasts, the overall context in which we're making budget decisions, so that the decisions that are made this year are made in that larger context. Some council requests have been to provide information as to what's happening in the region. At this point, we have, most of the budgets in the region have been presented. None of them have been adopted, but one of the handouts is a summary sheet of what's happening in the region. Richard LaConde has passed out two spreadsheets with some multi-year forecasts that he will present. And then the other handout, as an issue that has been requested in the past many times by the council, is in terms of some of the cost drivers on the schools and enrollment growth, where are the children coming from in terms of housing stock? And that data is provided for this meeting as well, and I think maybe Tony and I could both speak to that. So if we could start, I think, with the regional picture, and I'll just spend a little bit of time on this chart, and then Richard, pause for questions on it, and then Richard will talk about the multi-year forecast. The CAOs get together on a monthly basis in Northern Virginia, and at those meetings we do, we compare notes on our budget situations and what the contexts are. And so I want to share a little bit of that. In this chart, we have the counties listed at the top, Loudon, Arlington, Fairfax. And then we have the cities, City of Fairfax, Alexandria, Manassas, and then the towns, and then the city at the bottom. The first column shows the range of general government budget change, and it ranges from negative 0.4% in Manassas City. Leesburg also with a 0.5% growth. Those are two cities that are grappling with their CIPs and with a lot of structural costs in terms of their capital plan. The others, as you can see, are all in the, in those upper 2%, City of Fairfax at 5.3, and then the City of Falls Church at 3.9. In terms of tax rates, there's always a story behind everybody's tax rate, so you can't read too much into it. Some of the stories range from fixed costs like debt service and things like that. Some of them have stories about what's happened in the recent years as a lead-up to this budget. And so with that knowledge, what you do see is almost all of the localities are raising the tax rates to some extent or the other, with Fairfax City at a proposed rate of eight cents. I suspect that will come down, and the others between five and two. For every local government, the story is they are experiencing enrollment growth, and they're also experiencing multi-years of flat budgets, and they're kind of hit the wall in terms of the ability to hold the line on taxes. Real estate assessments, everybody is positive, but everybody is below 5%. And so you see Arlington, which has the greatest commercial sector in its real estate assessment and its tax base, is the flattest of all the jurisdictions. And those that have a higher reliance on residential, which is going up across the region, tend to have more growth. And then the other factor is that those localities, Prince William isn't on this chart, but Prince William has the largest assessed value growth in the region. Those that were suppressed the most are springing back. Those closer in, which didn't have that compression, are having the more moderate growth. So you see Arlington County with 1%. Our assessed value growth is 2.9, which is pretty much there in the, in the range that everybody else is experiencing. Arlington and Fairfax do have job cuts, a mix of vacancies and some filled positions in their budgets. Salary increases, and this is for general government, the majority are going at 3%. We do have a flat salary proposed in Fairfax County and in the City of Fairfax. And then the towns, we don't have data on that as yet. And in Falls Church, I'm proposing a 3% change. The transfer to schools, we have 2.5, 2.2, sort of in that range. In Alexandria, it's 3.3 and 3.6. Now, for a lot of these localities, there's a difference between what the school board has requested and what the manager has proposed. That's not the case for the charter here, nor is it allowed in the charter of many of the smaller jurisdictions. Enrollment growth, the last column, Arlington County and the City of Falls Church have the highest rates of enrollment growth. Arlington at 4.3, and the city at 5.3. And we can discuss with the schools whether that's syncing up with your discussions with the superintendents. This is all from documents that we were pulling off. And Loudon County with 3.9%, Fairfax County with 1.5%. So that's a quick summary of what we're seeing in the region. I'd be happy to pause and have a discussion or if there are any questions.
Why don't we start with the school board and go back to council? Susan?
Just a couple on this particular issue. As far as, this is great data, by the way. As far as like, when we're trying to look at this from a benchmarking perspective, because that's what we do. Is there a way we can, how you gather the data like?
Greg, your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In terms of how the data is gathered, is it just sort of self-reporting stuff? I mean, one of the things I am curious about is like, real estate assessment. Is it just sort of a self-reported thing? And because it's kind of hard to, for me to think about, you know, there's been some question about assessments and processes to get them and things like this. I'm just kind of curious about the background behind the data. Is this all just self-reported data by the municipal corporations themselves, or is this stuff that?
Yeah, this is information that is pulled directly.
This is pulled directly from their budget documents.
Thanks. That's all I have for now.
I just got a couple things. One is, I know every year we look at the tax rate and we say, well, our tax rate, you know, we charge it with all kinds of stuff that we provide to our citizens that other jurisdictions don't. I'm just wondering, not maybe with a math, but just by way of information, if we could lay that out a little bit more? What are the kinds of things that are included here but aren't included there? I just keep hearing about it, so I'd like to know. And I also wonder if we could, if we could collect information that's not so much about the tax rate, but about the, that it takes into effect the tax rate as well as average home value for, so it's really the tax bill that citizens are seeing, and it'd be interesting to see that as well. Right?
Yeah, and with respect to the tax bill, that does, to do that well, I think you could do it by locality, and the city would be the highest. But if you take it by zip code, then you might get a truer picture, you'd get, you'd get a different picture. We are essentially one zip code in size, and we have a median home value of over $600,000. No jurisdiction, jurisdiction-wide has averaged median values that high. So for comparability, I felt just comparing jurisdiction to jurisdiction might have limited utility, but you could maybe dig down a little bit and try to get some closer snapshots.
I wouldn't tell you how to do it. You're the experts on that, and I'm surely not. But I know, I learned from my friend Ron Pepe, who's not here tonight, many times that tax rate is one thing, but the tax bill is what people really look at, and it's what they really feel, and maybe that's something we want to pay close attention to. Thank you.
And I should just state, Ron's out on a family situation that's come up.
Yeah.
Council members?
Just two things. The salary increase column, you said, is general government salary increase. Is there data for teacher increases in the various jurisdictions?
That might be a question to pose. That's usually been presented in the past, so.
Okay. Just if we could dig that up, that would be helpful.
At our, at our last meeting, which was about three weeks ago, it was kind of a confidential, as in everybody shared where they were, but not everybody had shared their budgets at that point. So they'll, we will be updating at our next region meeting, which will be next week.
Okay, thanks. And the City of Falls Church, now, will have an asterisk next to its tax rate, right? If we do a stormwater fund. So this does not show the total increased tax bill if we go with the enterprise tax, right? Okay. Thanks.
Sarah?
Thank you. Just to sort of echo what Wyatt had mentioned earlier, and something you were referring to, Susan, these tax rate figures really, without drilling down, are very hard to compare. But drilling down creates its own problem. So it's, it becomes, it's very hard to do it in a shorthand way. Cash flow is probably better, but even that's going to be difficult, because then you have to start to disaggregate the components of the cash flow. So this is a daunting, this is, either you do it very simple, except that it's not really, you know, quite imperfect, or you spend a lot of money and a lot of time.
No, no, I get that.
To do it, so that's sort of where it is.
But in this city, we just, we just, like a laser beam, always go to this tax rate thing, and it seems like a simplistic approach, right? So you're right. So I guess what I would propose is if we're not, if we can't kind of drill down on this and really benchmark it, let's just not pay as much attention to this. I mean, that's kind of where I'm getting to, right? It just seems like a false idol. Right? I mean, because there are other things that would be more indicative, but they're too hard to calculate. There's more detail under here that would be important to know, but we don't really have it. So 133 for us may be the same or different as 1, 192 for Manassas or 120, you know what I mean? But that's what we key on during the budget process, is this one number, which is very incomplete.
Anything else, Sarah? Joe Hen?
Nope.
Dave?
Might be helpful to have some more data about how the schools compare average class sizes, things like that.
We're preparing that for you for our work session.
That's great.
We'll have more data than probably you've ever seen before.
I can't wait.
We'll have class sizes, we'll have salaries, we'll have, you know, all kinds of things to share.
Right. I'm just thinking we compare various things on this chart, but we don't compare class size, so it might be helpful to know what that is.
Yep. Yep. We'll have that for you.
That's what I have on this chart right now. Thanks.
Great.
Just a question to you. The job cuts, are those general government as well, or are those school?
Those are just general government.
Gotcha. Do we have any data for schools, for example, on the job cuts or, you know, the increase or something?
Increase of positions? I don't.
Okay.
I think Tony can, we'll collect some of that stuff once again when she has her region meeting next week.
Sure.
So when we, as we collect that stuff up, we'll get it to you.
I think also the question about total tax bill, and I would say in general, ours are going to be among the highest, because our median house price, to my knowledge, is among the highest, if not the highest, of all these localities. So to the extent that you add that on or layer that on, I think you're going to find that the tax burden is even higher. You know, not just looking at the rate, but you actually add in the taxed amount. It's going to be, I think, among the highest in the area when you add that in as well. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
The one request that I would have of staff, if possible, I know that we're getting additional requests for data and things to get added to the chart. If we can just try to keep it in one place or multiple pages that is together, so we're not flipping all over the place, and we're not expecting the public to flip into 20 different documents. So if we can try to do that without making it too cluttered, I think that would be helpful. But this is a request that I believe the council has generally had in the past, is to have the, these types of comparative charts. So, and they, I think that they have some utility, but they have to be taken for the limitations that they have. It's not going to be a perfect tool of trying to compare our jurisdiction with every other jurisdiction exactly. I mean, that's not impossible, but it does provide some benchmarking, which I think is helpful.
Justin, do you have something?
I sort of feel like this is our list wish list, and everybody's weighing in and loading this thing up with additional cells. But I think there, to make some kind of useful apples-to-apples comparison, I think we need to get a little broader in our view. And I would say, you know, while we're at it, let's throw in median household income, poverty rates, cost of, per student cost of education, to get a more global picture, because I think, you know, there are some qualitative elements about Falls Church and other jurisdictions, that I think we might be able to capture a little bit by adding some more of those data points. Again, to Mr. Kalin's point, it's, you could load it up as much as you want, or you could strip it down to three key figures. I guess we'd just be arguing about what those would be. But I think a little more context in that era, that realm, especially with respect to tax burden. I think we can handle a higher tax burden, because our median household income is, you know, 20% higher than Arlington's.
Sarah?
Again, just to repeat, I think, Justin, you captured my sentiment, but even the median income, if you have two barbells, you have a bunch of poor people, and you have a lot of wealthy people.
It's going to, yeah.
You know, the median just doesn't tell you that much, because it's really just in the middle, but it doesn't talk about the distribution. So again, having lived in the world of statistics, and also very skeptical about how far you can take it, without running into some other serious issues, people don't add it, interpret the data. That was random, that wasn't the leading to it.
Present company, except.
All right. I want to give planning commissioners a chance to make any comments or any thoughts that they had. Thank you. All right. Wyatt, if we want to move on to the next handout?
Happy Thursday, everyone. All right. I'd like you to take your sheets, look at scenario one. What we've tried to do with this, so that we don't alarm anybody, we've tried to just lay out some proposed revenue estimates. We've included the new developments that are coming online, and what we've done is we've said, okay, if we're going to address CIP, then debt service is a priority, so we put that in there on the line by itself. And then the balance is what is shared and allocated between general government and the school division. So the first example is FY14. As you know, the tax rate's $133, at least that's the proposed tax rate. The total for general government and school division is to $70 million, okay? Roughly 50/50. Roughly. If you go to FY15 and you tried the same thing, it meant, it would mean that the school and the general government would grow at about 4%, and so on. So the more debt service you have, the less money there is to divide up as you go out further. That's scenario one, and that is based on the proposed CIP. Scenario two. Again, same revenue assumptions. However, starting in FY15, we've incorporated all school projects. So that would include the middle school and the high school. And as you can see, the, again, you start out with FY14 at $70 million. After you take out debt service, as compared to the first scenario, you drop by about $800,000 in terms of the pool of money that's left. As you go further out, that gap widens, and of course, you have less to divvy up. Which means, absent, or if you want to exceed the growth rate that's projected here, which is break even, it requires some additional resources to accomplish it. And with that, I'm ready for questions.
All right.
When do you distribute it to Kool-Aid?
Next meeting.
Let's open it up to school board first.
So what, when you say you, under scenario two, when you say you assume a growth rate, you're saying a flat growth rate? Can you expound upon that for me a little bit?
All right. If you look at the total revenue numbers, you'll see that between FY14 and 15, we're projecting 4% growth. Between 15 and 16, it's 2 and 1/4. Between 16 and 17, it's 6.96, okay? And so on. So that's the basis for the growth.
I would just note, with this chart, there's really two things that are happening. One, we're modeling the economic development proposals that are on the books. So those revenues are modeled. And then the other thing we model is debt service. Those are really the two things that are going on in both of these charts. And so it's just one measure of financial forecasting. There are lots of things that you can try to model for, but those are two ones that we thought would be useful to understand in terms of sort of the best-case scenario in terms of revenue production from the projects that are online, and then lay that next to the CIP that we have, and where do we shake out? So that's really all that's being attempted to accomplish with these two charts. Now, you can argue over the background revenue assumptions of the 3% background growth as being what we're modeling here, as being either too high or too low. But the focus here is to try to capture the economic development and put that down there as a potential revenue. And you could argue with that as well, but that's what the chart is attempting to do.
And I think that was a, if I recall, this is something that came out of last year's budget deliberations in a comment that we had from the school board, that it didn't take into account economic growth that we could see. So I think that's, this does. So I think that lays it out. If I can just ask one clarifying question, sorry to jump in, but this hopefully will be helpful to others who are reading the chart for the first time. So the percentage change that we're seeing from year to year is how much growth we could have in the overall budget without increasing a tax rate.
Right.
That's correct.
So for example, in, in between, going from 15 to 16, that gives you 4.06% under scenario one, that you could do without increasing the tax rate.
4.12.
I'm sorry, 4.12.
Right. From 14 to 50.
That's right.
Right. Well, I, okay, so you, I'm sorry, my eye was looking down at the expenditure line.
Mm-hmm.
And the same would carry under scenario two. So I think that's really the intent of this chart. Right? Richard?
That's correct.
You created it, I didn't. All right.
Susan, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Proffer money, all the proffer money is, how's that handled in these assumptions?
The proffer money is not modeled, and so the, what we have typically done with proffer money, the school cap costs being the major one, you can either do it to sort of amortize it over time, to buy down your debt service, or as a project comes along, you spend it to avoid debt.
So the answer is, none of the proffer money you expect from these developments is included in these numbers?
That's correct.
This assumes that whatever that number is, is not applied to the debt service at the moment?
That's correct.
How much roughly would proffer money be from these developments?
For the ones that are coming online, it's about $4 million. So if you use that to buy down the debt service, then you could take off whatever annual.
You can take off one year.
But on an annual basis, you could take off between $300,000 and $400,000 on the debt service side.
Roughly a penny.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think that's a very good point.
Yes.
No, all of the ones, everything that's been approved plus these is over $6 million.
Oh, okay.
And now, the, what has been collected so far has already been spent. It was spent on the Mount Daniel expansion, and it's spent on the science classrooms back in.
Interest rate that you're calculating for debt service here?
Between 2.5 and 3%.
And there's no water fund revenue in this calculation?
Not at all.
Just so it's clear.
Not at all.
Yeah, no. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, and that's, we don't need to get into that, but yeah, it's not, it's taking that type of asset and utilizing it for operating, I think is going to raise lots of alarm bells.
Just one quick one, and this has come up in some of our meetings recently. For Rushmark, do these numbers include that there was a change of, you know, going to two bedrooms, and we've had questions about how that would affect student enrollment? I'm just wondering, we heard that was sort of going back and forth. Where does, where does that stand?
It's important to understand, on the revenue side, we're using the gross revenue. So this is not a net revenue figure, which actually won't, well, anyway, I wanted to make that clarification, because we show expenditures down here. So those expenditures are going to need to encompass the higher service costs. And there will be higher service costs with this development, but this is the gross revenue that comes with it.
Just a follow-up to John's questions, and sorry to go out of turn, but this follows up on what John was saying. Does the expenditures figure, calculate in the costs associated with the economic growth?
Well, if you're, we can do that, but what you see is you've got a, you've got the ability to grow the budget in FY15 by 4.12%. So that's what, that's the room you have on your operating budgets for FY15, once the Hilton Garden Inn and the North Gate come online. If you, if you agree with that 2.81% assumption, if that's what pans out. And then the following year, because there's no new projects coming online, your revenue growth is essentially just what, what market appreciation is going to be and that type of thing. So a moderate increase of revenue of just 2.25, and that's what your expenditures can grow.
But this model doesn't show, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, on the revenue, that's the gross revenue that's being shown, not including service costs, are the service costs modeled in the general government expenditure line?
Well, again, it's a pool of money, and what we are assuming here is a balanced budget. Now, what you include in there.
I see what you're saying.
Is up to you, but, you know, there is a pool of money that will be left over at that growth rate, and that's what is available to be divided up. If the costs.
I see.
All right.
Yeah, so this doesn't factor in?
No.
The expenditure size that are associated in the gross?
Again, this was done. Again, this was done to avoid, you know, the debate over, you know, what the number should be, and again, the bottom line for me, and for the manager in our discussions, was we could do a model that showed all the costs, but then we'd have these big deficits, and then we'd have a debate over, you know, oh, it can't be this big, it won't be this big, so here's what's balanced, anything else you want to do, have at it.
Right, but there's gotta be an underst...
Very much agree with you.
Right, right. Okay.
Can I ask a question, Susan?
Yes, sir.
So, Ira, put your seatbelt on on this one. So, because I actually think I'm a little concerned that we may be underestimating the liability side of something. Is there, is there a reason, yeah, well, is there a reason why you're estimating the interest rate on the debt to be sort of flat at 2.5? I mean, it seems to me, most of the warning bells, even from the Fed itself, is that will be something approaching twice that, or something within this projected timeframe.
In our debt service projections, we go a range of interest. Okay, for this particular period, it's around, the average is around 2.5 to 3, okay? It does go higher as we go out. But we didn't do 20 here, we just did 5. And could it possibly be short? Yeah. I mean, the revenue could be higher too, right? There you go, Greg, you know, there you go.
I hear kumbaya being pledged. All right, Phil? Is the, sorry, is the debt service percentage number, 23, 44, 42, we have a policy target for that? Am I asking the right question?
As a percentage of revenue, yes, yes, we do have a policy target.
And how do these numbers stack up to that target?
Not very well.
Because that target is 12?
12%.
12? 12? Well, let Cindy handle that, that's the CIP person.
The policy target is 12%, and in the current scenario one, the CIP in this would be in policy compliance, because we don't top 7%. If you do the all-in scenario where we add the high school and the middle school, as I modeled it in the presentation, the planning commission, in the out-year, you would top over 20%. And by FY16, you're above 12% and out of policy compliance.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at scenario two as my takeoff point, so I should have made that clear. Okay.
The scenario two includes the expenditures for the CIP for the high school, right, the 100 million?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And the middle school, yeah.
Sorry. They were looking across at the general government and school division changes. So basically, if there's any school growth, the city continues to cut its expenditures?
Again, if, if the growth exceeds, and let's look at scenario two, FY15. If the growth exceeds 2.83% for federal, I mean, for the general government and school, there would have to be some decisions made as to how that 2.83% got allocated.
Thank you.
Did you say anything?
David, did you have any?
Yeah, just a point or two. I guess I would just point out how critical economic growth is. I mean, look at this chart, and you see over when the hairs teeter and Tenner Hill kicks in, again, these are gross numbers, right? So we don't know exactly what the net impact will be, but it's just such a spike there, and it just, to me, shows how we're gonna get out of this hole is through economic growth and development. That, to me, is the solution, and it just seems to me crystal clear, when you look at this chart, of how important that is for us to be thinking, so that we can kind of manage all the issues we have. But anyway, that's the only point I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. The one thing I'll just add on that point, you know, I shared Dave Tarter's view that economic growth is gonna be very helpful. I don't think it's necessarily gonna save the day if we don't manage our budgets carefully. But in order to get a full picture of this, I think we need to figure out a way of including the added expenditures somehow into this, or footnoting it, or whatever it may be, because otherwise, you walk away thinking it's gross, looking at this, or you walk away thinking that this is the net. So there's gotta be a way of just annotating it, however we do it, to capture what we're already modeling as far as the expenditure side.
I have one more comment.
Ira?
I understand what this is about, I understand the, to put it nicely, the parameters under which you were operating. Though, what we have to take into account is that the expense, not just the interest rate, but the organic growth of expenditures is gonna swamp this, no two ways about it. I wouldn't even venture a guess right now, and it wasn't the purpose of this table to get into that, but all sorts of pension, salary increases, healthcare increases, all these things, which you're sort of referring to as well later, is the other expenses. So again, as with the comparison of jurisdictions, it has to be understood for what it tells us and what it doesn't tell us.
I mean, I guess to that point, I mean, we've had a discussion about sort of what growth trends normally are, if you're not, you know, you're still operating in a constrained number, and you're seeing organic growth, and why, correct me if I'm wrong, it's normally around 5%, right?
Historically, that's been the case, yeah.
So I think this is sort of telling...
Historic average.
That if I'm reading this again correctly, you're really not hitting 5%, you're not fully accounting for the increased expenditures with some of these projects. So I think that's an important takeaway from this. If historically, yeah, if historically we've been at 5%, this doesn't even hit that, and this doesn't even account for part of the ledger, which is, for debate discussion, staff hasn't included the expenditure sides on some of the mixed use, so.
When you have it, choose Andy then.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, I mean, so where would we, I'm just wondering, would we be looking for, so based on what we're saying, would we be looking for a piece of paper that shows big deficits or tax rates increases? Because your goal is to keep it balanced, so if you're gonna show growth in expenditures, you need, this is gonna be a negative number or something. And that's what I'm wondering, what are we trying to get it to do? Or do we say, well, it's gotta be up to 1.40, 5%? What are you gonna pick a number? I think, I understand the exercise here isn't so much to help us see the difference of what's available to spend in these two scenarios. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on what we're asking them to do, or if we're asking them to do something different.
And I think that's exactly right, Andy. So I think this was, this was one way of showing the numbers. I think that there's other charts that show the gap model if we add in the expenditures. Am I correct on that, Richard?
Absolutely.
We've seen it.
We've seen it, we just haven't seen it with some of the new scarier numbers, let's just say, that have been updated based on where the budget is right now. So we've got the ones from last year, basically, that need to get updated. Richard, have those been updated yet, showing the gaps?
We don't have good expenditure forecasts on some key things, and notably, we haven't had a chance to sit down with the school staff to kind of go over what you think, if we were to model expenditure growth, what that should be. And so with the absence of that data, we took this approach, just say, here's the money that would be left over, once you've taken care of debt service. There's some other things we could have controlled for, once you've taken care of city pensions and VRS pensions, what's left over, and things like that, but we wanted to keep it fairly simple. And let the focus be on capital planning, which I think is one of the key policy issues, you know, before us with this budget adoption, about how to try to accomplish our long-term vision and goals in the capital arena.
And just, if I can comment, I think this is a good way of looking at that. I do think that we still need those gap numbers.
I don't, I don't mean to, I don't think we should be jousting over unknowns, you know. One of the things, if our concern is that we're, the data is missing here that's important, one of the things that concerns me is that, you know, we're looking at percentage changes for the real estate. I'm assuming that you're talking about percent growth in basically valuation of property values, right? Is that the percentage change you're going across the board with there?
At the top, for real estate tax, absolutely.
Okay. So, I mean, they're roughly less than half of the historical average for growth in this region, and that is a huge thumb on the scale in either direction, okay? And so, well, I mean, I recognize what you're saying in terms of, yes, this is a historical norm for expenditure growth, well, a historical norm for revenue, or at least assessment value, would be twice that number. So I don't disagree with you, these are unknowns, so, but if we're gonna sort of put out this idea that putting in sort of historical norms on one side, then we should probably put it in on the other as well.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thanks. On page 11 of your budget, Mr. Manager, there's a statement that I note with some hopefulness to follow on what Mr. Tarter said about the importance of economic development. Sale of the water system will provide, sale of the water system will open the prospect of future revenues from economic development associated with a boundary adjustment. Since we aren't talking long-term here, I know we are not gonna count any chickens before they're hatched, but we are talking long-term here, so at some point, we will begin to model the potential revenue of the city's first gateway, direct gateway to metro, I presume. Yes. Good answer.
Others?
Assuming...
I said we're not counting the chickens before they're hatched, but, I mean, that is a large elephant that will be in the room, we all fervently hope, before this calendar year is out.
Other council members?
Anything else by the planning commission? All right. Move on to the next one.
Enrollment growth, and let me ask Tony to take the lead on that.
What you have before you is where our student enrollment is actually coming from, and that's a question that we get all of the time. Where are the children coming from? Well, they're coming from everywhere, so that's the easiest answer. But when you actually go through, we've tried to break this down, and I'll give credit where credit is due, because when I discovered this, it was in an older document, and the first time I ran all the numbers, it was kind of halfway done, and then Mr. Sharp found the original, that he and Mr. Cheney had worked on many, many years ago. So they had the old template, so we could go back in and start updating all the data, which was very helpful. On the far right-hand side, you're looking at the 2013 data, and it does show you the mid-rise apartments, low-rise townhouses, the mixed units are on here, so you can actually get an idea where the increases are coming from. Probably the one that pops out, you know, a lot, is Oakwood, of course, because back in 1989, there were 12 students there, now there are 157. So, yeah, that's an interesting one. Another one that was very interesting for us is, we're trying to, and when we do our joint session, we'll have more data for you, because we're really doing a lot of tracking. But even the townhouses on Park Avenue, that was really interesting for us, and we'll be watching this trend over the next couple of years, but from every townhome, it averages two students from the townhomes, just down the, just the townhouses on Park. Hunter, we'd have to pull the address until, and I'd have to pull it.
It says Pennsylvania Avenue.
Yeah, the Pennsylvania on Park.
Yeah.
Not you.
Not you, the other.
Actually, I thought it was subliminal, but we're not, we don't even show up in that any way.
There you go.
There. Going to hide it with this drum song. That's subliminal, though, that wasn't...
So we go through and pull all of this data by address, which does take a lot of time, so, you know, I thank you too, I wanna say thank you to the FCCPS staff as well, because it takes hours to go and plug in all the addresses of every student. The development on the second page, these are the developments that people will ask about most often. Pearson is increasing, as you can see, we now have 92 students that come from Pearson. What we do find, and we've talked a lot about, like the Byron, the Spectrum, and the Broadway tend to, the condos are tend to stay lower, where Pearson, of course, is a rental development, so, and it's high for us. We give you the multi-unit number, the overall student, and I will say, even on that overall student number, another trend that we're really watching closely is, during the budget process, when you met with your buddy on the school board, the enrollment data, we try to stay consistent, we look at those numbers, we're in September count, September 30th, but we're also watching how we're trending during the school year, because over the last five years, we're finding that from September to the end of the school year, we're actually adding each year. This year, we've already added, when we just ran this data this week, we've already added another 30 additional kids that are not on the enrollment charts we started at the beginning of the budget season. So even in this number, overall students, it's at 2283. When we update this in a couple weeks, it'll go to 2291, since we did this chart just a few weeks ago. Down on the bottom, the other question we get are single-family detached homes, and of course, you know, that tends to be a lot of the knockdowns and the rebuilds where families are moving in. Just when you even talk to our parents, they will all, we have a lot of them that will say, I used to be the only family on the street, and now there are children everywhere. So it's, the growth is coming from everywhere. Down on the very bottom, the other thing that we did is, we went on to the Falls Church government site and looked at how many houses sold last year. So there were 114 houses that were listed as sold. Then we ran the addresses of those houses that sold, how many of those houses immediately enrolled children? And it was 40 of those homes immediately enrolled children in the system, and that accounted for 68 students, which was 35% of the homes that sold in Falls Church last year. Of the townhouses that sold, there were 27, 14 of those, which is 52% immediately enrolled students for 24 students. So again, you can kind of see, it's, they're everywhere, and we love them all. And we will continue to look at all of our enrollment data, and I appreciate the great questions that people ask me and email me about, you know, enrollment growth, because it helps us go and pull more data, so. Are there any questions about?
First of all, I'd like to thank you. I've been trying to get this kind of in-depth data for maybe a decade, so, anyway, I think it's very helpful. And you're right, it is that the same, regardless of the type of unit, is more likely to generate school costs now than it did before. Or if it generated none before, it's likely to generate some, and if it was generate some, it's generating more. So I think that's a key point. Another key point, I note that the rate of growth among student increases is much greater with the multifamily than the single family. Now, we have more single-family detached houses, so we have more students coming from them, which is logical. But the far greater percentage growth, and even numbers growth, even from 2002 to 2013, is in the multifamily versus the single family. So there's some very interesting things that are going on here, and I think this is very useful for thinking about our planning, and helping perhaps provide some solid data behind the unending debates, or, as you commented on, jousting over the knowns, as opposed to jousting over the unknowns. So, anyway, I'll probably have more to say in a minute. I did wanna, I did wanna follow up with the request to the schools back, and I read it into the record on Monday night. You sent us a letter, I think last week, giving some ideas about how we could maybe finance some of these increased costs without necessarily a tax increase. So I'm really looking forward, because I really liked the ending of the letter. And I'm thinking, wow, this is, so I really want to engage you in that discussion. We don't need to do it tonight, but I'm really interested in creative thoughts, and I would specifically recognize Councilmember Duncan's comments about, is there a way we can manage these costs perhaps over time, rather than all at one time? And that's another thought that I had, to sort of smooth the transition, if you will, to this greater student population wave that we seem to be having, again, from all types of units, but especially the percentage increases from multifamilies. So in any event, I'll have some more comments, but I wanted to mostly express appreciation for... for your work here.
Other council members? Dave?
Yeah, this is probably more a question for the City Manager, but I wonder if you have data that you could use with the school folks to figure out the amount of students generated from new lots that are created, you know, either quote-unquote "substandard lots" or, you know, other subdivision of land, so that we can get an idea of whether, you know, what percentage is coming from tear downs and the like, and what's coming from actually new lots that are being created with brand-new houses, that formerly had one house that now have two houses. I think that's instructive, particularly since we'll be considering substantial... Legislation maybe relating to substandard lots coming up in the near future. So, I think that'd be helpful. I'd echo Mr. Snyder's comment about the utility of this. I know it's a ton of work to put this stuff together, I can just tell by looking at it. It's a ton of work to read it. So, I... My hat's off to you. I think this is gonna be really helpful to us going forward, and I think it is very helpful for planning purposes to try to understand the implications of things we might do going forward. It is fascinating to just see how certain types of developments have had these astronomical increases, and you wonder what the story is behind it. I think there is stories behind some of these places, like Oakwood, Pearson Square, but there are others as well that just, you know, have this sort of parabolic increase, and I don't know why, but I'd like to read this over more closely and maybe get some more input from planning staff as to why these trends are so stark in certain areas. But I would be interested, to the extent the City Manager and the staff can break this down even more, so we can get an idea what kind of student generation is associated with substandard lots and other creation of new lots in the city versus just rebuilding of an existing house on an existing lot. Thank you.
Anything? Johanna?
I agree with everybody who says that this is very useful data, and obviously, this is exactly what the school board should be doing, is pulling together these data. It's useful for them as they consider their planning. Do you have any sense, and I'm not, you know, asking you to do this, but do you have any sense about, within these large cohorts, you know, Oakwood, Park Ave., et cetera, how, you know, how the students map out? Do you find that, for the most part, you see growth in second and third graders versus juniors and seniors, and do you also have a sense of how long these cohorts stay with you? Do you... I mean, this is an impossible... Perhaps an impossible question to answer, but it would be, I would imagine, for your planning, useful to know that, generally speaking, you find the growth in sixth grade and under, and they last for two years, and then you have to reassemble yourselves and figure out, what am I gonna do with these four sixth-grade teachers now that all these kids have left? I'm sure you have... You're alive to the issue, and it's just kind of fascinating for me.
Well, being in a growing district, and because we don't add teachers prematurely, that even when the cohort moves up, it is very rare, when we've looked back over the last seven years, that when we add the sixth teacher, we kept the sixth teacher for a long time, and it just meant you may have 24 one year or 22 the next year. But the cohorts don't... The number of staff tend to not change. As a matter of fact, in the last... And I have a chart in my office that goes back about five or seven years, and we had one year, we're on one grade level, we went from seven to six, and then once we added the seventh, which is what we're hitting next year, we're at that threshold where we have 24 almost everywhere, where we're needing the eighth teacher. And so, you know, looking at cohorts, once you add that in a growing school district... Now, where the children come from, if I could answer that question, I'd be a millionaire, because every growing school district in the country would love that data, but that's part of just being a school, and we don't ever know which grades your new enrollment is going to come in. The nice thing, I'm gonna give you an example, this year, when we started the school year, MEH was flat. Now, during the year, they have grown, but when we started the year, we were shocked because they didn't actually have the most enrollment. It happened to be at GM and with our little ones. The year before, MEH was our largest enrollment. So, you just never know what ages children are going to come to us.
Other council members? Ira?
Thank you. On the... You did leave out Falls Church Crest. That's an HOA.
Yeah, I wrote it down. We need to go see how many kids.
Now, it doesn't... We had just people moved in with four kids.
I know, there's three, because I saw him playing ball in the driveway last night.
Well, that's probably... That's public property, as far as most of the kids are concerned. But that's another story. Not to mention, it's a dog run.
Okay, Ira, okay.
No, 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 no. No, no, not too bad.
Stay on task. Stay on task. I really didn't mean to start it.
Well, I know, I'm gonna say this. We actually had one individual with their dog tell us that it was public property, and we said, "No, it's private," and they said, "No, it's public," and we got into a big argument. Unbelievable. Life on Park Avenue.
Tell them to run for school board.
There you go. It was not part of the reachway. But these numbers are interesting, but again, you know, depending how you slice them and dice them, it depends on what you're trying to find and what kind of decision support you're looking for. In overall numbers, this is obviously very interesting. I think what... Be very candid, I think what Dave is getting at, sort of, and maybe I'm wrong, Dave, but the issue is the new development. So, I think that really is a separate calculation, because most of the other multifamily homes, you know, the mid-rise, low-rise, townhouses, mixed unit, many of them were built many years ago, and they have their own specific configurations, which are not being replicated necessarily today. So, trying to extrapolate from those older units to the newer ones, which have a different, I think, a different bedroom configuration, is not gonna give you decision support, useful decision support information. Probably more important, but probably really hard to get, would be precisely that, how many of the students are in, you know, of the multi-use in one bedroom, how many are in two-bedroom, how many are in a three-bedroom, would probably... Even in the older units, would probably give us a better idea of what we could expect going forward with the mixed-use homes and mixed-use places, rather than, you know, I don't know what... Oakwood has... Probably has some three-bedroom places, is my guess.
And you might remember last year, I... That's where we ran the data on the one-bedroom homes, on these new mixed-use, so that we could look and see what that data... And we're running all of those trend lines right now. Obviously, as you know, we wish we had a development department to run all these numbers, but it's... There's about two of us that do it, so it takes time, yeah. But we are looking... I know, we're looking right now, though, at the two- and three-bedroom, and that's where, you know, we're trying to work closely with the city, and we know that that's data that they desperately want. So, it's getting the plans from the unit to know what are the... All those unit numbers, and last year, we just... We literally went to Pearson, and they were very gracious to say, "Go through every unit number and tell us what's a two, what's a one." So, we're working on that and running the addresses in comparison to be able to help the city, to be able to inform how many students are coming from those. And I was expressing to, you know, Mr. Shields, when I was working with them, Oakwood, one of the things that makes that difficult, it's an older development, and where they've had a two-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit, when they've had a larger family that moves in, they will actually knock the wall out and make a four-bedroom unit. So, it's kind of tricky to even look at the plans and figure out what's actually inside it. But we're working on all of that.
All right.
And thank you very much. But again, if this is to serve as a decision support tool about the projects we go forward, we have to make sure that we understand what it is we're trying... What decisions we're trying to support and on what basis. So, that's why I wanna make sure that we're really not getting worried so much what happened in the past, what are the new ones. To the extent what happened in the past can be mirrored against what's currently happening, okay. But otherwise, using the aggregate numbers has a value, but not necessarily for the decision support as we go forward on mixed-use, new mixed-use projects.
So, we have a model that we've used in the city previously to look at these mixed-use projects and predict how many kids that'll be generated for the schools, right?
Yeah.
And has that model been generally accurate? I think it has.
It has been. It's...
Things have changed.
For the mixed-use projects, if you take them all, we were... You know, it's interesting, because we were going off of the Greer data from 2002, which had, for mid-rise apartments, pupil generation of .148 to help model our cost model. And then, so, if you look at the mixed-use projects, without the Pearson Square, it's about... It comes to about .1. So, it... The actual absent Pearson Square has been lower than forecast, and then with Pearson Square, we go to .2. So, point... We have tried to understand Pearson Square, and I think we do.
Isn't it that's subfluent, any problem? Does it lose its apartment status?
Yeah, you know, it is a condominium, so eventually, you know, that... We'll revert back to condo at some point. But so, with our forecast going forward, we take the... We take all the data that we can get, from every project that we have that's similar, and we update the data to try to produce an accurate forecast, but it always needs to be a range, and I think it's very important, from the city's perspective, we do that to understand, we do that to capital plan, we do that to understand costs, but we don't do it to try to drive what the developer's decisions are.
Of course.
The developer, in terms of bedroom count and things like that, that is market-driven, that's not driven by what these counts are.
City-oriented.
Yeah.
I just wanted to touch base on that again, because we do have various tools that we use for this, and I don't want Portoni to think that she has to spend her life grilling down into even more and more and more granular student data. If this is certainly helpful, if our model is pretty accurate today, this could help refine it, but, right? So, at some point, we do share that with the public.
The school staff really should be commended for this. This is tremendous to have this data, and the Greer... I think others have tried to replicate it in the past. I think the Greers were the last time we tried to have a good comprehensive look at it, if that's right, Honor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
I agree. Terrific stuff. Somebody who's spent a lot of time down in the weeds of these numbers, I'm really encouraged to see what we're seeing here, I think, understanding that, you know, you're gonna refine them, and we'll learn more, and that it'll always just be a range. But, you know, to answer the question the public most often asks, the five buildings, Pearson, Reed, Byron, Spectrum, Broadway, 605 units have produced 128 school kids. If the next 500 units that we build produced students at that rate, we would add, I believe the number is, 105 kids to the school system, which works out to about eight kids per grade, understanding that they all don't come in nice, smooth, and even like that, but still, you know, you have to come up with an average. That, you know, that is actually what could happen. Even if you took the number from Pearson, which is an apartment, and the buildings that we're talking about building now are apartments, so let's take that number, the .40 number, 500 units would throw off 200 kids, which is 15 kids per grade, and that is absolutely the worst-case scenario. There is no prospect... I don't wanna ever say that it's worse that we have more kids, because I don't believe that. I think it's, you know, we're in the education business, and we're darn good at it, and you can tell. But nonetheless, there are costs associated, public service costs with anything we do. The highest number that we could possibly throw off would be 200, and that's not gonna happen, because as the Lincoln folks told us last night, you know, they've studied this market very carefully, and they've decided that what they want to build at Lincoln is studios, one-bedrooms, some two-bedrooms, not many, no three-bedrooms, no three-bedrooms like there is at Pearson, because they believe that's what the market here needs. It needs more smaller units, largely for young professionals, who, you know, want a sort of a hybrid lifestyle, you know, a suburban urban thing, which is the unique niche, I think, that we need to try to fill in, you know, Northern Virginia. So, thank you for these numbers, and I do think they help, you know, answer the question, which is very reasonably posed by Mr. Snyder and others. If we build 500 units, you know, what are the public service costs gonna be? I think, you know, we know it's gonna be somewhere between 100 and 200 kids, and then we have to ask ourselves, you know, can we manage that number? What impact does that number have on, you know, operating costs and capital costs? Thank you.
Other council members?
Can I ask a quick question on the actual developments? Tanner Hill and Lincoln, we were originally calling it Lincoln, but now it's called Tanner Hill, same thing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just double-checking. And what is 400 North Washington? That's not something I've looked at. That's just office? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Barr?
I followed Mr. Duncan's logic all the way through. I just wanna... I appreciate the way he looked at the numbers. I just wanna take issue with his statement, "We are in the education biz." We're not. We're a city, okay, Mr. Duncan? We're not in the education biz. So, I just want to make sure that we balance this conversation by understanding that there is an entire constituency that this council represents that isn't schools and that isn't... That aren't kids in school. Thank you.
Other council members? Dave Snyder and then Dave Charter, or Dave Charter?
I have a question, whether we can break the data. I understand that Oakwood and Pearson have monthly rentals, correct, less than a year? I wonder if we could get data that would basically just have the places in the city that rent less than a year period of time, and their school generation ratios versus those that are a year or longer? I think that would be instructive as well. Thank you.
Snyder?
Going back to the first chart that we looked at, we were trying, I think there were some questions thrown out, the ability to pay, and I do want to do some more work on that. What is the average increase in household incomes that we've seen over the last several years, including this year? So, it's not just the ability to pay theoretical, but it's also the, over time, what's the percentage increase of costs and taxes versus where incomes are going? And it's particularly, I think, stark this year. I don't think the average household income here has increased 12.9%, for example. In fact, arguably, it's nil or even less, and that doesn't even include things like sequester and other potential hits to federal employees. So, I think that remains a question, but I think one of the metrics, because it came up earlier, and I don't deny that we ought to look at average household income, but the ability to pay, affordability, if you will, has several different factors to it, and one of them is that a 12.9% increase in anything, be it general taxes, be it school-related costs, be it whatever, probably significantly outstrips the increase in income, and I think that's an interesting measure to pay. So, I'd like some data on that as well.
Anything else by council members?
Anything else by council members? I'll turn to the Planning Commission in just one sec. So, I think this data is useful on breaking it out. I think we've been looking for this type of thing for a number of years, so really appreciate the work that went into this. I think what's sort of telling is, you know, understanding Mr. Kalin's point, but the historical trends and shifts even within the projects, I think, are very interesting, especially on the multifamily units and how the trends have shifted during the time horizon. So, I think it's very, very useful, useful information, some of it that can be used timely and gives us a sense of what to expect, potentially with some of the projects based on the historical data and the trends. So, thanks to the schools for getting us this info.
Planning Commissioners, Andy?
I'm just curious about the 114 houses sold. Do we have any sense for the people moving out of those, if they had kids in the schools too, or these... Or how recently maybe they had kids in the schools? Like, is that a... Because if that's, you know, if 68 students just moved out and 68 moved in, that's not a big deal, but if it's zero students moved out and 68 moved in, I don't know if there's a way to know other than they go back and...
If we went back the year before and then cross-referenced that address, we'd know if they had students, but I have not done that to this point.
And then, because related to that, you know, I don't know, but if I use the same ratio of 68 kids for every 40 houses and apply that to the this year's enrollment, you know, the citywide percentage of single-family homes with students is about 36%. It's not that far off from this replacement one, but since we don't know if this is just 68 kids coming to go, and it's interesting, but it kind of leaves this big gap of, you know, I don't know, maybe it's not okay. And then, we probably also don't know this, maybe we're not even allowed to ask, but it seems like with only 114 a year, somebody could... but it seems like with only 114 a year, somebody could call them up, say, "Hey, do you have kids that are going to be in the schools the next couple of years?" You know what I mean? Because I moved to the city maybe a year before my kids went to school, so I would have been one of these houses, and it would have said zero, but, you know, the next year would have hit.
And I will say that's one of our biggest challenges are the pre-K children. And as you know, our Mount Daniel did grow nine and a half percent. And so we, you know, we really are watching those little ones. One of the things we are doing this year, we're trying to get better and figure out ways to be more creative, but we're working on it today. Our enrollment forms this year, even when they enroll a kindergartner, will ask how many more children you have at home. And that will be coming to help us gather a little bit more of the pre-K data. So we're working on that.
Yeah, pretty soon we're going to hire Google to bring their trucks and start just, you know, listening and spying in each individual house.
Come up with an algorithm based on the searches that you're doing.
Can't we just, can't we just like, can't we pass a regulation that requires a license for a stroller, the way we do for bicycles? Yeah, right. You don't need to charge much, but that would, I mean, you got dog licenses, you got bicycle licenses?
All right, let's, let's not go there.
We could do like the old days and make them go to their hometowns to be counted.
All right. All right. Let's, let's move on. Why, did we, I think that takes us through all the handouts at this point. So I don't believe staff has any, anything else on this. So just want to open it up for any questions that people may have, any, any requests that people want to put on the table right now. But again, the preference is to do those in writing.
Mr. Mayor or Madam Chair, I don't know which way, are you going to start on the school board side, or just kind of open up?
I was just going to open it up, but a little bit of a free-for-all.
Well, I mean, I just, I just wanted to, I've heard some really good comments, especially from you, Dave, regarding affordability. And, and I mean, I'm sure you've seen my comments lately, that I think that in terms of decision support, it obviously is something that we're going to be grappling with as a community, is, is how do we pay for needs? And I think that, you know, a great deal of due diligence and scrutiny in terms of our budget and justifying is something we're going to be doing in the coming weeks. And, you know, I think the numbers you're seeing tonight bear out that we have enrollment issues, right? So we can talk about values in the community and all those kind of things, but I, I think that when you're grappling with the affordability issue, and I noticed Councilwoman Barry brought this up, she was like, "I'm glad that the school board brought us this budget, because it shows where we are as a community and what it's going to cost if we're going to have schools like this." And so to me, the common sense approach, and it's one that Ira mentions often when you're talking about data and trying to make the most informed decisions, and Dave mentioned tonight, the affordability factor, I really think that we're dealing often with anecdotal evidence of what our tax sort of burden, elasticity, ability to pay is. And it's almost like each, you know, we've looked at things like, oh, we're the wealthiest city in America, and, and there's issues with, well, what does that median really mean? And, oh, we have this high percentage of federal. I really don't know that the key policymakers, especially you guys, because you get the final decision on what that top budget line number is, has a true idea of what we can or can't afford. And I don't know the best way to go about doing it. I do know that we seem to spend in every budget cycle a lot of time looking at numbers that we treat, we can try to improve. It seems like every cycle, there's more data. But this one glaring issue about how much can we really afford to burden the community in terms of taxes, and we all know what that means, real estate tax rate, how much can they afford, you know, how much can the city really afford? I don't know how to tackle that issue, but I would think that that would be a great data point, right? So I don't know how you guys could look at it. I really don't know the best approach, but I would, I know that we would benefit greatly from having an idea what that would mean. Dave mentioned, hey, look at incomes. I agree with you. It's obvious that it's been fairly flat. We've had flat federal budget. I mean, Nader, and I can attest to this, haven't seen much in the way of federal raises now, and it's been one more, yeah, one more, once more into the breach on that issue. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, wages here are fairly flat. And so increases in needs, that seems to indicate that the ability to pay taxes is shrinking, right? I think it also is important to look at other data, though, like when you, when you're talking about the 12%, you know, people's ability to spend probably matches, interestingly, with how much the city has saved. And I suspect those numbers are the same. I mean, while people haven't seen their wages increase at the same rate, we've seen the city saving money at a rate that you don't see people able to save either. So while, you know, you may extrapolate that same kind of idea that, oh, people can't afford to increase how much they're spending by 12% because they haven't seen the wages, they can't afford to save 17% either. So, you know, I mean, I just, I feel like we need to find out decent data points to see how much people can afford before we make these decisions.
You just had to bring up the general fund. You just couldn't resist. We were getting through the meeting, and you had to raise that.
But it was 9:10. It's okay, I mean, he wasted less than...
Richard, you do have to respond about where these so-called savings that we have are coming from, in terms of what the city is not doing and where the savings are. And I'll tell you right out with the bat, if you're thinking of doing $100 million debt, you cannot be thinking, running down your general reserve. Do not concentrate your debt and lower your reserves at the same time, especially if you're dependent on real estate taxes. We are too low now. Frankly, 17% is significantly lower than it should be. I don't make an issue of it, but I tell you, on that issue, I don't even want to hear about personally reducing the 17%. It's just imprudent and harmful to the city. Well, look, one issue of the 17%, the number wasn't arbitrary. We did some research to figure out where we needed to be. A lot of other municipalities, and we are trying to accumulate that information so that we can share with you, they have already set up reserves to deal with specific issues. Some municipalities set aside money for future school district increases, so they have a reserve for it. They have reserves for automobiles. They have reserves for equipment replacement. The city of Falls Church has none. So 17% to me, while we call it unreserved, and we call it our piggy bank, or whatever title you want to give it, it's the only cushion you have against any economic downturn. So, yeah, we can, we can debate what is necessary. I mean, our policy says you can go down to 12. But again, as Ira has pointed out, you are about to embark on some major borrowing. And I don't know how you can go to a rating agency and say, for our $4 million of debt service, just for a high school, we have $17 million in reserve. Okay? That's, you know, again, you can make whatever argument you like, you can talk about changing it. If that's what council and everybody wants to do, that'll be fine. However, you do not address any of your issues. We can't renovate this building. We can't buy police cars. We can't buy plows. So, and we don't have the reserves for them, never had them. And I, you know, I've never experienced that before. And you just, you know, need to get over the 17% because that's what you need here.
And I will note also, there's been so much discussion of it, because we've needed to get back, and we've had to take strong actions to get back. But in the city's history, we've always been up around 25%, and I guess very quietly so, because it didn't used to be something that was discussed a whole lot. And so it was, it was very difficult when we did draw it down. And we had obviously severe fiscal issues that caused that to happen. But in terms of getting back up, you know, it's been, it's been difficult to do, and it's occasioned a lot of discussion. But that's really just getting to back to where the city has traditionally been through the 80s and 90s. And so that number is not unusual in the city's, in the city's history. I just make that additional point.
So, not trying to get into a debate on this issue right now, and I, I would be perfectly happy if the percentage was 500%. You know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not saying that we wouldn't like to see a lot. It's just that there's no doubt that it's had an impact in terms of our funding, that we went from what was really drawn down, reserve, piggy bank, whatever you want to call it, to 17%. And a big contributing factor to that has been that the school budgets have been flat for three years and record enrollment. The consequence is where we are now. So I'm not trying to say that, it's just that a lot, as much is being made of this 12.9% request, that's the consequence. That's all I'm saying. Now the community has to decide how to deal with it.
Why don't we go around, see if there's anything on the side, and then we'll come back there?
Well, I mean, I tell you, I think all this just brings into the issue, we have three basic competing interests, right? We've got schools, we have the city budget, and we have the tax burden. So when we give on one, then we got to, the other two are going to feel the pinch. And so, I mean, it may be obvious, but when you, if you want 12% here, you got to either increase the tax burden that amount, or cut the budget on the city side that amount. And so, I mean, I guess we're trying to find where that balance is, but I think the balance is probably somewhere in the middle in a lot of things. And so, you know, I don't have the answers just yet. Hopefully, we're going to work through them in the next couple of weeks. But I think that it's, we got to look at all three of those legs, or at least on this side of the table we do. So, anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Dave?
I think this ability and willingness to pay is, is fundamental to the city's long-term sustainability. And, and I think it's very important that we look not only at the numbers that we're looking at today, but also look at that. I think if you have children in the schools, this city is a great deal at a much higher tax rate compared to the same quality education you're getting, basically, I would say, a fine private school education at significantly less than you would pay for that in the market. So even living in an expensive house, you're not anywhere, as we well know, paying anything near what it costs to educate one student, let alone two. So the affordability issue becomes something very different depending on what your connection is with the city. And if, again, if you have kids in the schools, it's a very rewarding experience, and you're, you're getting incredible education. Even at a much higher tax rate, it's still a huge bargain. Concern I have, and you don't tend to see them at hearings, is a lot of people that don't have that connection with the, with the schools, traditionally, the community has been willing to support the schools, even at a higher tax rate than they see in neighboring communities, because that was just the value of the, of the community. The concern I would have is, do we run the risk, either because of absolute numbers or because of the rapidity of the increase is such that we create a wall that has not previously existed? And then you have a breakdown in community consensus, and then nobody's happy. And it hurts the schools, it hurts, frankly, everything. So that's what I'm sort of wrestling with and trying. It's not a quantification, but it's trying to take all, looking at all of this across the board. And Dave Charter mentioned it is a balance issue, so that we continue to maintain the quality of the schools, we continue to have police with excellent response times, fire department, all of those things. And we, we somehow preserve and move into the future the unique elements of this community, because I'm absolutely convinced that that really is our future. It is in education, cultural, the arts, being the non-Tyson's corner, if you will. And then you have to ask the question in the commercial sector, what are they looking at? What's their willingness to continue to support the overall payments? And that's a critical part, I think. And it's hard to get a handle on that, because as has been well documented, these new developments bring in more customers who spend more money. On the other hand, if that exceeds the increase in costs that the business has to pay in taxes, then you've created a negative there for businesses. So I think finding out and staying very close to our business community is important in this process. So I would just say that's kind of my view of things, that I do want to, I do want to maintain the excellent schools and city services that have been passed on to us. And now, how do we not only get through it for the next year or two years, but, but remain sustainable in the future? That is just a couple of basic comments.
Ms. Barr?
Yeah, Greg, I, I always appreciate the, the way you frame the questions, and they're always, they're always lively. And if nothing else, lively. And, and to the point. I think I, I may be the only council person either now or in the council's history whose professional life is asking people for money. That's what I do for a living, okay? And, and your question is, it comes to the heart of what I do, which is, how much can that person actually give me? Well, there are metrics. You know, I look at their wealth engine scores, I look at what they give to other, you know, organizations, and then I figure out how well they feel about what I do, what my organization... So, you know, you take all those pieces together, and then you say, "Okay, Mr. Resnicki, I, I'm looking to you for a gift of $50,000."
You're in trouble.
Okay. But you see, I know that you gave $50,000 to your local school. I know you gave, ba, 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 ba. But you see, you see where I'm going here. So you can take those metrics, like the average person in the city of Falls Church makes X, and that average person ain't me, but you know, you see where I'm going here. And you can put it all together, and then you can ask Johanna Berry for a tax rate of 190. And you will either get a yes, you will get a no, or you will get a hell no, okay? Because what you have to tell this person when you're asking them for 150, 190, whatever the number is, you got to be able to say, what am I going to get for that gift of, in my case, $50,000? Am I going to get a naming opportunity? Am I going to get a whatever? Am I going to get an excellent city service? If I don't have kids in the school, and I did, everybody remember, I, I too was a bus-stop mom, if I don't have kids in the school, so what else am I getting for my, my tax rate? These are the questions, these are very simple questions you have to answer. If you're going to ask people to put out a significant amount of money, you've got to say, and here is what you are going to get for that particular amount of money. Just because, and here's another fundraising, you know, dictum, just because they have the money, doesn't mean they're going to give it to you. Bill Gates has gone to Galapa, goes, "I cannot tell you how many times." The guy has not delivered dime one. Does Bill Gates have money? Oh, my goodness, yes, he does. Does he want to give it to us? No, because he's got other priorities. So, so while, while I think it is a, it is a fantastic, and I mean that in the literal, it is a fantasy, a fantastic piece you put in front of us about, you know, everyone, you know, what is that sweet spot? What, what is it that people can actually afford? I think what you're going to discover is, again, just because people have money, doesn't mean they're going to give it. And if they do have money, they're going to have to get something for it. And if it ain't the schools, it's got to be something else. And so, so that metric you're looking for, that sweet spot you're looking for, I'm not entirely sure that you will ever be satisfied that we're going to be able to quantify that. Because I don't, I honestly don't think we can. I think what we have to talk about is, you know, what needs are we meeting for this broad community? And, and how do we, and how do we measure that? That's, that's what I think we're going to have to get to.
Other council members?
Thank you. Two, two points. I won't go into detail, but you're raising, we're raising capital markets issues, and I know capital markets. There's a whole bunch of things that are very technical, will affect our ability to borrow and how much we pay. borrow and how much we pay. Accounting changes, et cetera, how we show how much money we owe, liabilities, et cetera. We don't know exactly that's gonna play out. But there's a real possibility that there'll be systemic downgrades, not necessarily for Falls Church, but for any community that the markets believe have outsized debt. It will be measured in the balance sheet, and investors will say, "Whoops, do we have enough money in this community with that type of liability?" This is a whole movement. This is for another topic, but trust me, capital markets are far more complicated than we are discussing right here about how they operate and how they price the product. The other thing I'd like to just discuss very briefly, which is an article, another article I'm thinking of trying to prepare if I can find some time. Believe it or not, I have other things I'm doing besides the thing.
Chasing the dog.
Only my wife can talk to me like that. Do you understand? Not you.
I said full in the meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
The issue is, everybody would like to see their housing values go up, but not everybody wants to see them go up in the same way or the same amount or care as much. It's a continuum. If I own a mortgage, excuse me, if I have a house without a mortgage, and I'm in my seventies, I'm more worried about my cash flow rather than protecting my equity or having it protected by a good school system. I have to meet my everyday bills. If the market collapses by 10 percent, I just lose 10 percent. Okay. You go down the continuum, as you get to people who have larger mortgages, and maybe relatively young, they have both a cash flow issue and an equity issue. Because if you have a house, like a $500,000 house, and it goes down by 10 percent, you have $400,000 in debt and $100,000 in equity. That 10 percent uses up $50,000 of your equity, and you just lost 50 percent of your equity, not 10 percent. So there are different continuums and different interests. It's gonna be very hard, as Johanna says, in between my fulminations, I'll give you credit for that.
Between the fulminations, thank you.
Finding the sweet spot, because it isn't a matter of that we just are protecting the housing values. It's a matter of how much do people care and how much are they willing to pay for that level of protection, the type of hedge? And that's unclear and unknown. And I'm gonna try to see if I can develop a little bit more in the sociology of that for a thought piece in one of my issues papers, as it were. But I think you need to keep that in mind when you try to figure out how much.
People are.
Willing, it really depends where you are on a number of issues. Thank you.
Other council members?
Thank you. Well, my business is public relations. And to me, the biggest challenge, public relations wise, that we face in this budget is talking to citizens who, as Mr. Snyder refers to, are, maybe they're seniors nearing retirement, looking at life on a fixed income, maybe they're young families trying to save money for education for their children, maybe getting by on one income while one of the other parents stays at home with the kids. And the challenge when you talk to those people is explaining to them why the city has a savings account of 17 percent and they don't. And I'm just putting it out there. That's what I hear when I go door to door from some people. And I think we have to confront that, and we have to have information to feed back to them to explain why we have what we have. Now, the manager is absolutely correct when he says that in the city's history, I trust that this is true, we've had a reserve fund even larger than the one we have now. And he's also correct that there is widespread ignorance that that is a fact. I mean, I cannot tell you the number of people who've lived here for decades, who've come to me and say, "Why in the world are we hoarding all this money?" It used to be that the number was, you know, 12, and we let it go down to eight, and now it's 17, and we can't even talk about going below that, even though, as Mr. O'Conroy said, the policy allows for a discussion of 12. You know, elected officials before us, in their wisdom, gave us a policy that has a range. And I think we have to be able, in the context of this budget, to have an educational process and a democratic discussion that gets the community at a point where it understands why we're doing what we're doing. There may be very good reasons for it. The second point that Mr. Kalin brought up, which is, you know, the most important point, is what do the ratings agencies make of us? Because we have to borrow money. We have to borrow a lot of money in order to do what we need to do. And I would like to have a greater understanding of the ratings agency's assessment of Falls Church's potential to do just what Mr. Kalin says. Can we pay our bills? You know, the two things that I hope are not changeable here are we have very high-quality education, three things really. We have a terrific small-town atmosphere, we have very high-quality education, and we have a gold-plated location. You know, they ain't moving Washington, D.C., or Dulles Airport. And if they do, then a whole lot of people beyond us are gonna be in trouble. And so I would like to understand more about, when we go to these ratings agencies, take out the small-town feel, because I understand that's not quantifiable. Education, I think, is a quantifiable thing. That's something that we can show ratings agencies, you know, we're, you know, class leader here. And certainly, location. It's just inconceivable to me, given the underdeveloped commercial properties along Broad and Washington, all up and down Broad and Washington, that any, you know, reasonable, economically-minded person would not be confident that if a community had the will, it could generate substantially more revenue than it is currently generating. And we are showing, to further impress them, that we are committed to doing that and can do that in the very near future. I mean, all these things taken together, to me, make it legitimate to have a conversation about the size of the reserve fund, so that we can have a broader understanding of why it is what it is, and so we can consider whether there's some flexibility in it as we meet these very, you know, concrete needs. You know, we're not paying for limousines for city council members. We're paying for a school building, we're paying for a city hall, we're paying for stormwater management. These are things that are gonna be around for 50, 75, 100 years. That's what I got on that.
Mr. Kalin?
If you need an education on this, Phil, I'll be glad to give it to you.
Why did I know that that was gonna be the first response?
If that's your problem, I was wondering, what do you tell people? You say, "I don't know." I mean, I'll educate you. By the way, the way you described it, you went to an investor and go through that description, that would cost you 30 basis points more. Because if you really need it, then they're gonna charge you more. You go in and you say, "I'm Falls Church," and you get the best rate. The more you explain, the more it costs. That's the way the markets work. They are ice cold, Phil.
It's great. Let's go in and explain to them that we've got a 12 percent reserve fund, and that all our brains think that is absolutely gold-plated terrific, and, you know, say no more.
And it's 100 basis points.
But you just told me that if I don't, you know, say too much, then they'll be, I agree with that.
I'm gonna try to get us to move past this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll say on that front about the fund balances, we've had that discussion, there's been lots of room to talk about the policy. The council arrived at a policy, voted on it, put it into place. If the community wants to have that discussion, I think it's absolutely fine to have that discussion again. If council members want to have that discussion again, they're more than welcome to have that discussion and put that forward, if that's what they choose to do. But it's not that this has been done in a vacuum, without much discussion, without much debate, without much consultation with the markets and the rating agencies and our outside consultants. So this is a debate that we've had, and we've looked at this every year that we look at our policies. And I believe that we're doing that every year, and it's coming up again. So it's a discussion that happens, and it's reevaluated about are we where we need to be? And I think the point that's important, based on what we've gotten from our consultants, are if you're about to go to the markets, you need to have the right amount in reserves or, you know, the markets are gonna take that into account. You know, so, and that's just the reality of where things are at. And I think we need to just move past that. Either we stick to the fund balance, or we reevaluate it when we get to the policy discussions, which are coming up down the road. So, other council members, and then we'll turn to school board members.
Thank you.
Right, schools?
John, do you have any questions you need to ask, anything you can say?
Not so much a question, just sort of taking issue of something that Dave Snyder said. You know, when you were talking about the quality of the education here and how that compared to, you know, in effect, getting an almost free private education. And I fully agree with that, but then you said, "And then there are other people who don't have a connection to the school." And undercurrent I hear is, basically, you have kids in the schools and you support the schools, but if you don't have kids in the schools, you don't have a connection to the schools, you don't support the schools. And it's, I think it's completely wrong, and I don't think there's anybody here who would say, you know, that is right, but that's what I keep hearing, which is, you've got kids, you like the schools, the implication being, if you don't have kids in the schools, you don't, whether or not you, you know, sent your kids to the schools for, you know, 13, 14, 20 years, whatever. So I just want to say that, A, I don't think, you know, Dave meant that, but it's something that is sort of an unpleasant undercurrent that I've been hearing, and I just wanted to, you know, sort of clear the air, at least from my side.
Charlotte?
Um.
Any comments?
You just wait.
I thought you were pointing to me.
No. You have your turn.
Justin?
A few thoughts. Balance of schools, taxes, and general government, I think is fine, but how do you build half a high school? Where's the give and take on a $100 million building? I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. But what I do know is, where is scenario three? Where is scenario three that tells us what we really have to face? Because I can do a finance scenario for myself of, what if I just keep in steady state and don't pay for my kid's college education? Or what happens if I do have to pay and my income's flat? The fact remains ultimately, these are realities. And I really wonder if someday people are gonna come and look at a video, God help them, of this meeting, and say, "This was one of the days when the future, when the future of an independent city of Falls Church was decided, and it started to go down the tubes." Because, you know, fundamentally, you do not represent the non-school people, and we don't represent the school people. We're all in this together. I don't use Medicare, I'm not on Social Security, I pay those taxes. The Virginia Constitution requires free, universal public education. And if we don't add a single teacher, we still have to build a high school, and we have to build in addition to Mary Ellen Henderson. You can have a 50, 100 to 1 student-teacher ratio. Those capital requirements aren't gonna go away. And we can't sit here and say, "Well, this is a business proposition," where you gotta say, "Listen, we know that you all were educated back in the day, but times are different, and now everybody's on their own." We're better than that. And I mean that collectively and in the city. And we cannot have a positive, productive engagement with this sort of, you know, you're East Berlin and we're West Berlin. You can be West Berlin and we'll be East Berlin if you want, but there's this divide. This divide is ludicrous, and it's destructive. And if this is how we start, God help us how we finish.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that there are a couple of things that I'd like to just take issue with. I mean, one of them is, I keep hearing this issue of, like, folks in the community that are retired and may have their mortgage paid, and that's sort of the stereotypical person that we're protecting against in the tax rate increases. And the idea that we would, like, the best approach to that is like, okay, this person doesn't want their housing value to go up. It's like, so are we gonna adopt public policies that don't allow the city to progress? Or should we be looking at ways to protect them through tax relief or something like that? I'm not sure. I would think that the better approach would be to ensure that we have not sufficient or mediocre or even good, but great public schools, so that we do progress and have home values that continue to increase, and find ways to protect these people. That's the approach I would take. But in terms of this idea of, like, you know, we're debating and talking about, nobody seems to want to, but I'm gonna say it, the reserves is, to me, it was like, the city council was quick to address, you know, exigent circumstances, emergency, with the reserve funds before. All right? And that was a whole story. We had to do it. We had these circumstances that were beyond our control. And I'm gonna submit to you that the situation we're in right now is a crisis. It's a crisis. I mean, we have an enrollment crisis, and the consequences for not facing it are going to be dire. Our superintendent, I mean, you can just absolutely drill through our budget, I'm looking forward to you doing it, but I'm just asking you, before you draw a line in the sand that this reserve fund is some kind of grail that can't be touched, there may be an idea that you have to balance your interests here and what we may be able to afford to borrow. I mean, I'm not willing to accept just the idea that you are the, Ira, that you're the only person that understands how capital markets work, okay? You may think so, but there are a lot of communities, well, you just.
I didn't say I was the only person. Please don't mischaracterize my commenting. Did I say I was the only person?
Okay. I apologize, you didn't say that. But that's how I felt when I was listening to you, is that, I'm just saying, there are a lot of communities in a similar situation. Capital markets aren't gonna shut down the doors, because they need communities to borrow. Yeah, rates may be higher, we might have to pay a higher rate. But what will we have left to protect if we offer kids bad schools? What, I mean, what community are we gonna have? So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I finish? I just think, before you draw lines in the sand, at least explore the idea that we think we're facing a crisis here. And if we don't face it, I think the consequences are gonna be dire.
I want to give the planning commissioner opportunity to ask any questions that they have.
We don't have any.
You know, I'll just say, I have been listening to this battle back and forth for, oh, God, now seven years. And it's exhausting. It's exhausting. I mean, we are all running the same city here. We all, we all know what we need to do. Do I wish the school board had done a better facilities plan seven years ago when we first put that plan together? Yes. Do I wish that we had put a bigger Mount Daniel addition on? Yes. Do I wish the TJ addition was bigger? I think there's a lot of issues on the school side where we could have planned better on the facilities. We should have gone to referendums and done bigger additions. But we are where we are. And so we have to make a decision, and Greg is correct, we have to fix this facilities issue. We have to. But we also have to fix it on the city hall side. Because I know for a fact right now, we have asbestos in this building being held down by duct tape in places. So we have a real big issue. And so the question is, what do we do? Do we spin down the reserve fund and hope that we don't have a downturn? Do we raise the taxes? Do we hope that we can put a commercial development in, next to our high school and pay for all this, and we, I mean, or at least cover some of our debt? We just have, there's a lot of big issues here, and at some point, we're just gonna have to make a decision about how we're gonna afford this. And, you know, frankly, a lot of people, and these are mostly parents, so this is, you know, I can't speak for people without kids, we just say, raise the taxes if that's what we have to do to pay for the debt in the short term. But in the long term, we've got to get this development going. We've got to get these anchor projects in so that we can get better commercial development. And that's the only way it's gonna happen.
Right.
I can go back more than seven years. In my former life, I represented the teachers with the city council, so I spent much time at school board meetings and city council meetings. The thing that I've realized over the years, living and working in leadership in the city of Falls Church, is that we are so overly cautious about doing the big ideas. And really, we do things in little bits and pieces all the time, and that's just not the way to do it. And when we do do something. And when we do do something, particularly in the schools, I've been very aware of the fact that we do value engineering, and so then, twenty years into it, we've got crap. I could see it in the high school, where we just did the addition, what, twenty years ago? It's fallen apart already. But we've got to get value in what we do if we are investing in infrastructure, and we have always put off the infrastructure constantly. So, I've been in these battles forever, but I do think that we need to stop doing the little bitty projects and get to some bigger ideas. Now, we got the community behind us for the only new building that we've ever built, Mary Ellen Henderson, and that was a big darn deal, because it was public-private relationship there. We got it built on budget, on time, and it worked out really well. If you want to go back to some, you know, in decisions that should never have made, we should never have had that, the Virginia Tech Center up there. That should have been our land to build a school on. And, you know, our Whittier or any of those. I mean, seriously, we were not thinking ahead to the big projects and to the big needs that we have in our very, very wonderful city. And I'm not going to say the city is more valuable than the school system or anything else like that, but I think this needs to be looked at, and we should have been looking at it for the city hall, for all kinds of stuff, a long, long time ago. But I think we do need to work at it.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Cullen? You're just going to open it up again?
I have an idea. I have an idea on how we can move forward to mesh this. If this is something we're all trying to read the tea leaves of what the citizens want, let's put it on the referendum in November, and let's put it up for thirty million dollars, with an understanding that there will be three more tranches or so. And then the citizens can vote on it, and that will be the end of the discussion.
We should have the high school referendum.
Yeah, yeah.
More amount.
Yeah, well, I think that's, because of the debt service, that would actually need to happen, so I think that's a discussion that we're going to have, Mr. Cullen.
But that's do it if, yeah, let's have the discussion.
I mean, I think that's going to come up in the CIP and how that gets implemented. So, on some of the projects, the council's not going to be the final say, because they'll be over our threshold, our policy thresholds.
It'll be over seven million.
So, I'm sorry?
About seven million, you'll start figuring out the policy.
Yeah, so anything that's above seven, and I think we're going to look at how they're divided up, so.
Or the project.
No, the project, the project cost over seven million.
So, it's kind of a referendum.
So, a lot of these are going to be referendum items, so that's going to happen.
But don't do it in bits and pieces.
That's.
Let's be comprehensive, and will additions have value?
So, I'm going to take the mayor's prerogative and take the last parting shot, but, well.
Well, I always said thirty instead of a hundred million. We could do a hundred million.
Susan, I'm happy to go and then have you go, if that would be in the spirit.
Make sure to make sure you recognize that.
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
So, what I was going to say is, you know, I hope that we can all keep the vision of one city and that we're all part of the same thing, and that's to have a thriving city, and two, that we need to have a balanced approach at the end of the day. So, and that we have lots of work to manage this budget ahead, and we'll get it done. I'm confident that we will.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things to say. First, I would, my light, oh, I'm sorry, I thought the green light was on. First, I would offer that every jurisdiction in this country is in the education business. Not solely, but every jurisdiction in this country is in the education business. That's one of the great innovations that this country has brought to the world, is free education for every child. There are other things they do, too, that we educate kids in every jurisdiction. The second I would say is, I think it's unfortunate that, in budget time particularly, but other times in this city, that the tone of the conversation about the schools tends toward the fact that we have too many kids. What can we do about it? This is a big expense. It's a big problem. We don't talk a lot, I mean, we do at the school board, but in these sessions, we don't talk a lot about the fact that our schools and our school division is one of the most important assets of our city. One of the most important assets of our city. And we now know that we have someone here from capital markets who's an expert, and someone from PR, and I'm a marketing person, and I would say that one of the things in marketing that we do to help organizations build their value is help them understand their distinctive competence. And I would say that for our city, our schools and our education are our distinctive competence. It's not our parks, it's not our roads, it's not our library, although some people in the school board love it. What we do uniquely, compared to the competitors in our region, is our education system. And I know people get tired of hearing this, but it's why we were founded, it's why we succeeded from Fairfax County. And frankly, and I wrote this in the news press a couple of years ago, we get a lot of value for our dollar based on what we pay, given the results our children have. And so I just think it's unfortunate that we don't think of it very positively, but negatively in this regard. We don't know a lot of things we talked about tonight, but for me, and I'm just not a Rhodes scholar, so maybe I'm not that bright, but for me, this is pretty simple. And that is, traditionally, the schools have received about forty-six percent of the city's general fund for their operations, and we've used it wisely. Over the past few years, that has diminished and is now at about, depending on how you calculate it, between forty and forty-two percent. Every percent's about $700,000 to our school system, so this is a lot of money for us. This particular budget we're asking you for kind of puts us at forty-six percent. So, I could understand the concern here if the schools were suddenly asking for forty-eight or fifty or fifty-two or fifty-five or sixty, but over the course of the last few years, we have defunded the schools. Now, I could understand this when we were in the throes of a terrible recession, right? We cut, you cut. We did what was best for the community. But by my calculation, since that time, the city's revenue has recovered, and it's recovered quite nicely, but the share to the schools has not. So, to me, it's that simple. It's not about what people are willing to pay or capital markets or anything else. It's about the fact that we send a lot less money to the schools. Now, that would be challenging enough for our schools. However, on top of that, we have rampant growth in students, and everyone that walks in the door needs books, needs teachers, needs a desk, needs all the things that you imagine for kids. And the intersection of three to four to five percent less money from the city with twenty-five percent increase in schools, kids, is just not sustainable. It's just not. So, as I said, I'm not that bright, but it comes down to me to some very simple ideas. Our class sizes are too large, they're larger than our peers, right? Our teachers are unpaid. We've got kids coming out the windows, and I think that, I'm sorry, they're not paid as well as their peers in other jurisdictions, and we'll provide you with all this data, right? So, I just feel like it's not too much for us to ask, just to kind of get back to where we used to be. Now, if the city's revenue hadn't recovered, it would be different, but it has, right? So, to me, that's what this is about, and it's very, very simple. Now, we've had some conversation here about what the community wants from our schools, and I would have to say, the school board comes from a place, which is that the community expects excellence. Not good, not very good, not exceptionally good, but excellence. The city expects the best. However, it's been some time since the school board has taken a strategic look at that and other issues. So, in May of this year, the school board is going to convene a community-wide visioning and strategy session about the schools and where we're headed. You'll be invited, planning commissioner will be invited, city staff will be invited, the business community will be invited, parents, staff, teachers. We aim to bring together all constituencies in the city to have an open, community-wide conversation about our schools, what we want and what we expect from them, and what the strategies are to get there. Because from a school board perspective, and this is my seventh budget, I think it's unfortunate that we are in a place where we no longer assume that excellent schools are the right of our children, our obligation, and the value of our city. So, it's time for us to have the conversation, and we'll be having that in May, and we hope you'll participate with us. We'll figure this out. But in the interim, for me, this is a simple chart, you know? It goes like this. Students, city revenue, school revenue, and a gap. And we're just trying to fill the gap. We're not trying to, you know, we're not asking for fifty percent, sixty percent, we're just asking for what used to be routine for the schools to get. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate all the views. I think this has been a very, very helpful conversation from many standpoints, and I appreciate the strength of which schools advocate their case. Sunday, a couple of weeks ago, I finished the program, and someone came up to me and who said, "Don't you dare pass on the kind of taxes that you're talking about, and we'll take my family's entire disposable income." So, there are those voices as well. So, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to maintain, to do our jobs as we do and will, and at the same time, maintain the support of the entire community, because if we don't, if we don't, we'll ultimately destroy ourselves. So, that would be the only point I would make. We understand exactly all the different voices, but we are, if we just listen to one constituency and not all, we run the risk of losing the whole effort. So, that would be the only point I would make. And again, I don't disagree with a word that anyone has said, but there are different viewpoints, and I don't claim to represent that viewpoint. I mean, we're living here, our kids have graduated, we'll pay whatever it takes to maintain the schools, but there are people who are in much tougher financial straits than I am that are saying, "You're going to take my entire disposable income if you do that." So, in any event, that's a voice to be heard as well. We'll need to continue to work on moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. So, just as far as next steps and upcoming meetings, so Saturday at ten o'clock in the community center, we have the town hall, and that's going to cover the budget, and we're also going to have a discussion about stormwater, and that's from ten to noon in which room in the?
The teen center.
In the teen center. And following that, council's going to be going in their regular budget work session, so Wyatt and I are still, for council's benefit, trying to, we need to sit down and work out when the major driver discussions are coming up, interspersed between the departmental presentations as well. And the goal, again, is to keep those very short, succinct. Expectation is everybody's read and comes prepared with questions and what the drivers are within departments as well. So, and we all have that, so Wyatt, are you going to be setting up a budget sheet that lists when various departments are presenting, so we can have the reading list?
Yes, I'll send that out tomorrow.
Correct.
See if there will be a draft.
It'll be a working draft.
And then finally, the one outstanding scheduling item is working up a joint meeting for the school board and the council to do a little bit deeper dive on the budget and go over questions. So, again, if there are questions, I want to take a moment to figure out how we're going to transmit the questions back and forth. So, my suggestion would be that they go to the city, city council questions for the schools, go to a staff member.
The clerk?
We could do it through the clerk. Does that?
Why don't we, council, if you could send them to me, and I would say by Monday, by the work session on Monday, and then I can get them to the superintendent. In terms of dates, I think maybe we can best do that offline and then set that date where the school board comes back.
Yep, and then if the schools can do sort of the same thing. Mr. Cullen?
I just want to make sure, we can save a lot of time if there's an agreement that we go to a referendum.
Ira, you have your mic.
I'm stopping.
No, a hundred million or thirty million per year for three, whatever you want to do, but that'll save a lot of back and forth. Just, let's get it on the referendum.
For November?
For November, and that'll take care of a lot of the discussion going forward. That's the big project, that takes care of it. Let's do it, then we don't have to, we won't have this discussion, you know, every year about what the capital requirements are and whether we can fund it, that the citizens will have told us what they want.
Can we do that?
So, I just really would think that might be a way to clarify this and make the discussion a lot shorter. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to remind people that the school board has an all PTA forum on the budget on Monday evening at Mary Ellen Henderson. You're all welcome to attend. And also, next Wednesday, the League of Women Voters is having a town hall on changing demographics in the city among our students, where they come from, where they're going, and how that affects our budget. And I'm not sure where that is. Oh, it's in Chambers on Wednesday night, and the community is welcome to attend that as well. So, is there other places people can learn about the budget?
If we could just ask Cindy or Wyatt, if you could just have Kathy just post those as public gatherings, because I'm sure council members are going to want to attend.
Mr. Mayor, the Monday meeting that she just mentioned does conflict with our work session, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, don't take that none of us are there, that we are not interested, but rather are otherwise engaged.
They can talk about you.
Mr. Mayor?
There's no reaction, obviously.
Mr. Mayor? I just, I'm not going to be at the town hall on Saturday, so I wanted to give Ira a chance to yell at me one more time before you do that.
Oh, God.
I apologize, Ira, I really did, I misspoke. You're not the only person that understands capital markets. You're just the only person that understood what you were talking about at that moment, so.
All right. All right, well, thank you to the school board and our planning commissioners as well.